Good afternoon, this is a Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. We're meeting in council chambers in City Hall. The address is 100 South Monroe Street in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas. Today is Thursday, October 9th, 2025, and the time now is 5:46 PM. We'll begin by establishing quorum. Today, we have Mr. Seth Garza present, Luis Velasquez, myself, Tiffany Velazquez Sanchez, and Mr. Jesús Casas. Absent, we have Noel Rodriguez. Do we have any citizens' communications today?
We don't have any.
Okay. Item number one, presentation on city affordable housing initiative and public survey. We'll begin at 5:46.
The mayor will be sitting as an ex-official.
Oh, okay. Let's start on. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to first thank our Planning and Zoning Commission and Mayor for being here with us for this important topic. I also want to thank everybody here in attendance. We have a different variety of experts in the field of development. We have some realtors, brokers, investors, builders, banking representatives. So, I think lawyers, media, yes, thank you. So, we have a very good variety of people in attendance that I think can give great perspective on the topic. That's really the goal here is to talk about what affordable housing is and what we could do as a city, as a local government, to try to encourage more options for affordable housing. So, let's start off with what, well, I'll show quickly, the topics we'll be covering. One is what is affordable housing? We'll talk about a little bit of stats, some numbers, and local policies that are probably a big impact to the cost of housing. We'll have a questions and suggestions section where we'd love to hear from everyone, and then we'll talk a little bit about what actions we could take moving forward. And this is a, this is an item that is affecting not only the state, the country, many areas around the world as well. It's not a local issue. So, it's not something that I think we could solve overnight, but we can take some meaningful steps, and Mayor Valdez and City Council have tasked us with that into doing the research, getting the public input, and finding some viable solutions on what we could do and what we could do hopefully soon to make an impact here. So, let's get into it. First off, what is affordable housing? And HUD defines it as a household spending no more than 30% of their income. So, a household, just to make that clear, you know, it's not saying, you know, one person's income if maybe there's a couple and both are income earners, so you're, we're adding both people's income to determine the household income. And so, combined, if they're spending more than 30% of their income, they're considered housing cost burdened. Basically, almost a third or more of their money is just going to pay the rent and pay the bills to keep the lights on. So, that means there's much less for food, healthcare, medical things, leisure, you know, basically everything else we need to, you know, do to live. And another stat that I found is that over 50% of Latinos are housing cost burden, meaning they spend 30% or more on, on their housing. Here's some data. You may not be able to see it too clearly, but the reddish-orange color is the Maverick County numbers, and each of those bars represents a level of household income. So, there is unfortunately some very, very low household income, which is as low as the first bar in the first group is $10,000 or less household income. Then you get a little bit further, closer to the middle of that chart, and you've got $35,000 to $40,000 household income, 40 to 45, and it keeps going up in, you know, in increments. And so, as you could see, a large percent of our population is making under $60,000 for their household per year. Of course, there is some more affluent people make more money, and those are some of those bars a little further to the right, like the 60,000 to 75,000 income range, or 75,000 to 100,000, you know, that might be, or even 100 to 125, we might start getting the range of maybe two people, maybe teachers, on a 40,000 or 50,000 dollar salary each, so combined, they're at about a 100,000 household income. According to census data, the median household income for Maverick County is $51,000. There's a couple more data points here, like the number of households has grown from one census year, which is every 10 years. So, we are seeing, we are seeing growth of total households in the area, which is a good sign. Our population is slowly going up, which is actually a bit rare. Many other cities in the state and around the area have a flat or declining population. So, we are actually seeing growth, and that's, that's a testament to, I think, the different commerce and opportunities that there are here in our area. So, the chart on the top right, where you could see the different shades of purple, indicate the number, and this is, this is another level, this measures severe housing cost burden. So, what I talked about before was 30% is considered housing cost burdened. This is 50%. People spending half or more of their money just on their, their, you know, rent mortgage and light bill, you know, those type of things, just to keep the lights on, as they say. So, these are people spending half or more of their household. And you can spot Maverick County in their, you know, our county that sort of triangular shape along the border, unfortunately is in the darkest shade, meaning the highest percent of population, over 13%, severely cost burdened in terms of their housing. So, so we're, obviously, there's, there's an issue, and that's a big part of Mayor Valdez, you know, and this initiative has a very important task for us to find, start finding solutions, so that's why we're here today. I think the, one of the first things, and that's most in the city's power control, is our local ordinances. Definitely, you know, we've heard comments, so lower the fees, reduce the fees, don't charge us permits. You know, that, that is one way to reduce some of the cost to develop, but I think probably the biggest factor of all is the size of lots. The most common, what we see, basically, all new subdivisions that are being developed now are being developed as R2 single-family zoning. That has a 5,500 minimum square foot lot size. A lot of cities have made moves, some even very drastic moves. Austin, one of the well-known people, cities in the state that has really aggressively made changes to their requirements to allow more ways to, to have affordable housing. Houston is another one that has some of these, you know, very drastic changes from the way things were in previous years. So, a needs assessment has, was conducted part of a grant that the, the city was applying and received, and it, it helped us to get a little bit of data on demographics and some of the trends. Ultimately, you know, just kind of supports the issue and tells us what, you know, we kind of already see with these basic numbers, if the average people make X number of dollars, but our houses, typically new houses, are somewhere around 270, 280 now, a lot of them even over 300,000. There's a wide gap between what our local people can afford and what is being built and put on the market.
Mr. Madera, I have a question. On the higher percent of severe housing cost burden, does that mean that in our case, Maverick County, the cost is actually greater than the average?
Well, it's a lot, it's, it's two numbers, a factor of income and the cost. And so, we are unfortunately an area with low income.
Low income?
Low income, a higher percent of poverty in our area. So, it may not be necessarily only high cost of the house, but we definitely have a lower average income than other areas. So, that basically makes that gap farther and puts us in that severe cost burden, higher category. That's a good question, thank you.
Thank you.
So, here's an example, just a screenshot, we won't talk too much about this, but this is our, our one single-family, this is a screenshot from our ordinances. These are the things that basically tell you what box you need to stay within. If you want to build and you're zoned R1, this is going to tell you, for example, the minimum lot size needs to be 7,700 square feet, the minimum width needs to be 70 feet, minimum depth 110 feet. So, it's basically creating certain rules, and if you want to build in an R1, you're going to have to follow, follow this. Or you want to develop new lots, you're going to pick either R1 or R2, one of the types of zoning, and you're going to have to follow those rules accordingly. So, here's where I think where things get interesting, and we really want to get, get everybody thinking, especially our, our experts here in the audience too with us. So, this shows all of our residential zoning types that we currently have. These are the options that are available if somebody wants to develop. You know, we have several developers in our area. The Libson family is doing Terra Verde developments in Santa Maria. We have Mr. Mondragon doing some developments. You know, there's a handful of people who own large tracts of land, and they're usually kind of ranch, open areas, and they subdivide. They turn those big open land ranch areas into lots that can be built. They build out the streets, they put in the utility lines, water sewer, electricity, and then houses can be built on those. So, these are the options when a developer wants to do that. Here's what they have to choose from when they're going to plat their property. So, as I mentioned before, R2, which is the second column, is the most popular. 5,500 is the minimum lot size there. We have front setbacks of 25 feet, meaning the house cannot start until 25 feet back from the front property line. There's a rear setback of 16 feet, minimum width of 55 feet, and depth of 100. So, again, these are all the different critical rules that come into play if you want to build that R2 and then build a, a house on that, that 5,500 or largest lot. So, then we have duplex, apartments, townhouse. The two on the right are the, are the newest, in around 2000, early 2000. I was not here for this, it was just before I came into the department. These two were added into the options. At that point, it was, this has been an ongoing issue for the state and around the country. So, these were put in as, as ways to maybe be a little more efficient, a little more cost-efficient build. So, you see, this one goes down to R5, 4,500. That's, that's our smallest lot size available, smallest option. And then the R6 has a 5,500, does have a little bit of smaller setbacks, but ultimately still has the 5,500 square feet, similar to R2. So, ultimately, you still need the same amount of land as an R2. And the far right is basically the, the most I was able to find, Austin and Houston were a couple examples of cities that have gone to new zoning as low as 1,800 square feet lots. So, drastic difference from our R2s that we typically see as the, pretty much the primary and the only developed lots that, that we're seeing these, these days. And in order to kind of make that 1,800 square foot work, it could be potentially with a 20-foot setback, a little bit reduced from the 25 that most of the others have, a 10-foot rear setback, 30 feet wide lot, and 60 feet deep. So, this is a pretty important one. I, I would like to pause there, see if anybody on our commission has any comments or questions so far.
Now, I've seen some developments, you know, some other places, and, and one of them, I've seen where regular housing is there, but then there is like a section, and within that section, there is like 20 homes that are, you know, kind of small. It's still, you know, within the same development land, but it's a section. So, somehow, even though there might be some regular housing, you know, on, on those lots, then there is this section within the development lot that are very, very, I don't know if you've heard the term tiny homes, right? I've seen some, some of that term the late, the last two, three months. And it seems to me like we're looking at homes that might be somewhere between 650 to 950, you know, square footage, for two bedroom or probably up to three bedroom might fit in there. Does something that would, would be, would be, is there any way that planning, you know, the planning department, the committee on development department can actually help us out? If, let's say, I come into the play and want to develop land, but within that development that I'm going to do, I'm going to create these sections for this type of housing, is that something that might be possible?
Yes, yeah, that is possible. Typically, it would probably come as part of a master plan, so if somebody has maybe 100 acres, one phase could be maybe R2, and then another phase adjacent could potentially be one of these other ones, or even a new one that we, we may create if, you know, Mayor and Council believe that that is the move that we should make here. So, it is possible to have a mixture. We do try to just look at it to make sure everything is, works well together, but yeah, that is definitely very possible.
And the reason that I'm saying this is because some people like big lots. So, maybe a 5,000, 500 square foot is not big, but it's median size. Some people might like bigger, but some people, you know, the modern age, I guess, consumers, talking about the new age people, they might probably don't care too much about having like a big patio or, you know, a big yard. They just care to have something where maybe instead of having a regular home, we can have a home that has very good size, but a two-story.
Yep, great point.
So, that's, that's something that maybe a developer, you know, following Mayor Valdez and, and the council, you know, trying to create this, which I, I really think is, is a great idea, is, is something that we might look into, but at the same time, a developer or prospect developer in the future might look into, he's going to develop 30, you know, acres of land, maybe get a section of five acres that can fit, you know, this type of housing, which is going to be nice housing, it's just going to be a little bit smaller.
A great point, yep. And, and that's, that's really what we're here to talk about is for there to be options. We currently don't really have options available if somebody wants that right now. If somebody wants the 5,500 square foot lot and the 1,300 or 1,500 square foot home, that's what's on the market, that's what's available. We're trying to figure out if there will be a demand and what, what are those numbers, what should those be, what, what should we create options for? Ultimately, it still comes down to a developer wanting to create those lots, and then a builder buying that lot and building this new type, but, but I think it, it has to start here. It has to start where we create the option, because right now, they don't have that option.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Yes?
If I may. Here in this chart, you have the front and the rear setback, correct? And then when you're talking about the minimum width, that is the width of the lot, right? So, on the high-density column, you have 30 feet. So, what would be the side setbacks? Because usually it's five, right, per side? So, now with this new column, what would be the?
So, that's the one thing, I should have listed it, that's a good question, but that's the one thing that doesn't really change.
Okay, so it would still be five?
That's a fire safety related item, so 10 feet from building to building is basically the minimum. So, that wouldn't change. So, we're talking about a 20-feet-wide building.
Correct, that's where I'm getting at.
Good idea, yes. On this high-density example you have here, do you have any, any pictures or examples of somebody that's done this stuff?
Yes.
And how he looks aesthetically?
Mm-hmm, great question.
Do you have anything to provide for us?
Yes, definitely. So, we'll, we'll move forward, we can always come back to this if you have questions or come back and look at the numbers.
Thank you.
So, I put a few things here, but basically, it's just talking about other places, what they're doing to try to tackle this. Nothing too critical here, so we'll, we'll keep it moving. But I do want to show some numbers. This is, I'll put it on there, and I'm going to say it loud and clear, it's oversimplified, it's not real numbers where I broke down every single factor, but it's just a ballpark giving you, again, an oversimplified. So, let's just say, for an example of 10 acres of land, somebody wants to develop. If they go with the typical, which most people are developing, R2, that's 5,500 square foot lots, if you chop up 10 acres into that 5,500, again, I'm ignoring streets and parkland and detention pond, but again, just for an oversimplified, just to give us ballpark stuff, you could cut 10 acres into 79 lots. Now, we brought that down to 3,000 square foot lots, which I saw several cities have created that as their, as a new minimum to try to address affordable housing. By reducing to 3,000 square foot lots, basically double, and you can have up to 145 pieces in the same 10 acres of land. And then if you go all the way to the 1,800 square foot lot, which is pretty much the, the lowest that I saw, or the lowest I could really kind of wrap my head around how something could fit, a home could fit, and that jumps all the way to 242 lots. So, to me, this is the number one area that needs to be addressed, because land is finite, you know, it's not growing on trees, it's not, we're not getting any more. And so, the land that is available, we really need to be as effective and efficient with, with using it. So, you know, when we hear these different things, well, the city's fees and different issues, I understand those fees, but if you're able to do those same fees broken out into 145 or 242 lots, those fees become much more incremental, much smaller per lot. And the price of the lot, if you can look to the column on the right or the box on the right, so, let's just, again, some.
Mr. Madera, I'm going to have to step up.
Yes, sir? I understand. So, the, the item on the right, I looked on some online realtor type of site, you know, Zillow, those type of things, and there's a screenshot there to the right of the screen too. This happens to be an area of MGA subdivision, one of the areas where there's some lots available for sale right now. So, just as a ballpark, I see those are 90, 85, different numbers. I just brought it down to a round number. Let's just say a developer feels they need to sell their lots for 80,000 for it to work out, for their number, for it to make sense, basically for them to take on that risk of doing the development and hopefully make a little bit of profit. And again, I'm taking that number from basically what lots are selling for, so I'm assuming that's the number they feel they need to sell them at to, to make it worth their time. So, 80 lots, which, I'm pulling that from the left, that they're doing it in R2, if you have, if you can do 80 and you sell them for 80,000, that's roughly 6.4 million of total sales of those 80 lots. So, let's just assume that's the number they need to get to, to make it worth, worth their investment. Now, let's look at 145 lots, which is how many would fit from that same, same 10 acres at a 3,000, and now the cost, you know, we're just changing that middle number, it could be brought down to 44,000, and we still get to the same end total of 6.4 million, which is, again, the assumption of what a developer would need to make it worth their time. So, by reducing the size of the lot, ideally, the goal would be the lot price would drop, essentially here from 80 to 44K.
Mr. Madera, I know that this has nothing to do with the planning department, but by using these figures, I don't know, because I don't have the experience, you know, the technical experience, I would say, in developing land, maybe, you know, someone from, from here can let us know a little bit more information. But don't you think if, if I'm doing 145 lots, maybe even though the sales might hit the number that the developer wants, maybe the cost to develop is greater? So, by result, you know, it's going to create less profit for them? Because one of the main issues that we have here is that prices of lots are high because there is high demand and low supply. And I believe that if we can open, you know, this affordable housing, and we can open different options for developers, there's going to be more supply, and maybe at that point in time, you know, the prices, the pricing of the, of the lots might get a lot better for the consumer. So, I'm just going to put aside, you know, if they're making the same money by, by doing a shorter, or, I mean, a smaller lot, but I'm just trying to assume that by creating more supply, I mean, more competition, I mean, who benefits when there's more competition? I mean, consumers. So, I, I do believe that by authorizing all this, you know, at some point, it's going to create a, a, a big supply, which people is going to benefit from it.
That's just one more factor. There's, there's plenty of factors to this, but yeah, that, that's one more factor. So, and then just to wrap up this example, again, very oversimplified, but if you get all the way to the bottom one, and we do 1,800 square foot lots, you can fit 242 and get down all the way to $26,000 for a lot and still come up, I didn't get, it didn't round exactly, so that's why it's 6.3, but basically, you could go to 26,500, and then we would get right to the 6.4 again. So, the point of showing this is just that the size of the lot is really our biggest hurdle, and the city has been, you know, setting these minimum-sized lots. So, that's, you know, I know fault necessarily the developers or the builders, that's what they have to work with, and I think that's going to be our, one of many things that we'll be trying to address to help reduce this. Now, of course, there's more factors, and you have to build the roads, and if you're going to fit 242 in the same space of 80, you probably have another street looped in there, so there's going to be increment, you know, more cost to build in the same 10 acres.
More fire hydrants, more, wouldn't you say? What, like, did you run?
So, the main things is utilities, you're running, you're paving roads, which is probably the number one cost, you're running water sewer, electrical, so the developers have to pay all that. But the biggest thing about that example I showed you, and it's a 30-foot, it's narrower, so in the same distance, in the same block, in the same amount of pavement and water and sewer lines, you just now have double the number of houses, but same amount of pavement, same amount of utility. So, some of this stuff does not actually go up until you need a whole new lot, because there's, the lots are smaller and you have space for a whole other street. So, some things will go up, but again, if you go up, now you divide that extra 100, 200, 300, whatever thousand dollars it goes up to do more, 500,000, you divide all that by the 242, it's a very small number that you're tacking on, it's much smaller to tack on to that number of lots than to 80 when you have to add costs. So, ultimately, the, the size of the lot is, is really a, a very big priority, but there's, there's more to it. Mr. Casas brought up some other things, and, and so, again, we, we like these ideas, and we want to see how can we try to address all these areas, because there's multiple factors that come that result in, in, you know, the, this, this issue of high, high-cost housing. This is a cer, this is a chart, okay. The reason I put this is there's been a steady decline in the birth rate, people having less kids, kids are expensive, a lot of people just sometimes have no kids because they'd rather be able to travel and do their own thing, and so, this is a chart just showing there has been, for some people, some people still having many kids.
Everybody was having, everybody was.
Nobody was.
Or dogs, you know, or pets.
I felt it.
So, you're, you're helping boost the average back up, but everybody else is bringing it down. So, so this is just showing, and that may be, that ties in again, you know, maybe you don't need as big of a lot, maybe you don't need as much of a yard for kids to run around if you're having less kids. Maybe you don't need four bedrooms, because it's just maybe a, a couple, maybe you'll need two, you could do, or even an efficiency. So, it's just an illustration of, again, different, many things are pointing to, I think what we used to think 20, 30, 40 years ago about housing and the American dream and white picket fence, it, it's gone, it doesn't exist anymore. So, we need to adapt to give what the new American dream is, and that's just being able to afford something and not having to, have your only option is renting an apartment if, if your budget can only afford maybe 1,000 or 1,100 dollars a month. So, here's some options. Mr. Garza, thank you for that question earlier. This, this white one on the right is an example specifically to what fits in a 30-foot-wide lot. And I put the link here of where I got it, hopefully the internet, okay. So, this is a website I found that has, you know, a different search specifically to show various skinny house plans, is what they call it. Some of these are skinny depth-wise, but some are actual the frontage. So, like, this is a 20-feet-wide home, the one from the example I showed. This is also a 20-feet-wide by 53, so I'm not sure if these numbers are large enough for, for those of you to be able to see. But you go two stories, and like this one, for example, even at only 20 feet wide and 44 deep, it's a 20, it's a 1,600 square foot home, plenty of room. But you go two stories, and like this one, for example, even at only twenty feet wide and forty-four deep, it's a twenty, it's a sixteen hundred square foot home, plenty of room. So you, if you still need the room, for those that, you know, have still larger families, you could still do it in a smaller tract in a smaller home, you just go two stories. Some, I see in San Antonio, other cities, they even go three stories, um, to, to really be compact width-wise, again, to take advantage of that. The main costs are the length of streets and how much pavement and utilities cost to run down those streets. But as I'm scrolling, these are all dif- different options, twenty-two feet wide, thirty-fa- uh, that's a wider one. Twenty-five, and this one has a garage. This is a different type where you have multiple units, this is a three unit. This is gonna be another topic, right now, we've been mostly looking at the single-family options, but another way to be, to build more effectively and efficiently is to do this type of a townhouse where you have multiple units on one lot. Um, there does come a little bit more costs with fire barriers along the wall separating one unit from the other, and having more than two units, in this case, three. You do have to have fire sprinklering to comply with fire code, so there's definitely more cost. But when the lots cost what they do, I think it's still beneficial, uh, to look at options like these, where you go vertical and potentially, uh, merge under one roof. Uh, to the right, there's a twenty-one foot wide lot, or house structure, twenty-one, twenty-five, so there's various options that could fit. And, you know, of course, if other cities have, have moved to these eighteen hundred square foot lots, you know, I think that tells us there is ways to build homes on that size of a lot. So, um, did that hopefully help you get a visual, Mr. Garza, on your, your question, that was a very good question, thank you. So we'll come back to the slides, uh, we're getting closer to the end. Another popular thing some cities are doing, like City of McAllen has adopted the allowing of accessory dwelling units. Uh, a lot of times they shorten, they abbreviate and say ADUs. And those could be detached, so maybe in your backyard, if there's some space, you build another small unit back there.
Now, now that you touched that point, uh, I know, because I went through it, but, uh, I know as of right now, the city of Eagle Pass, uh, is only allowing, uh, I guess, the household to have one, uh, meter, is that the way it works? One, like one line? Electrical? Is there any possibility that within those plans, you know, if we're gonna try to do something, let's say for our parents, you know, on the back, or let's say, you know, one of our sons is going through, I guess, starting his new marriage or whatever, and he doesn't have the money to buy a house, uh, but we wanna make sure that we separate the bill, right? And so, so at this point in time, I believe that, uh, that the city is only allowing one meter, you know, or one account, uh, per household. Is, is there a possibility that, uh, that we can move into having at least two, uh, accounts, uh, in the near future?
Great question, so that, again, that's, that's what, those are the types of things we're looking for, great idea. So right now, what regulates that, or what causes that, is back to our R one, what I, I showed you, that screenshot of our ordinance. Right now, they all say R one, R two, a lot of those, it says specifically, one single-family dwelling per lot. And then therefore, when developers build, they also place a note on the plat to make sure it's clear. On the subdivision plat, it says also, one single-family per lot. So the point that you're making about the utilities is a secondary effect of those ordinances. Only one meter is allowed, because the rule says you can only have one unit. So this is where we're talking about possibly presenting ideas to council to change those ordinances, change those rules. If we re- remove that language, now it wouldn't create that, uh, barrier to getting a second meter. Uh, one, again, Austin, one of the most aggressive, I would say, or, or progressive, I don't know what the best word for it, in making a lot of changes to their rules to, to tackle affordable housing, because I think we probably have all heard Austin housing prices skyrocketed maybe the most of any state, uh, city in the state.
So I have two sons in there, so.
It ha- it has started decreasing in the last few months, um, but it, it really went high for several years, uh, before that. They, um, adopted many different things. One, one of those is everywhere in their town that, uh, was at that point called single-family dwelling, which we just talked about, you know, where only one house could be built. They removed that and said, from now on, you can do up to three units on every how- on every property that used to say, "single-family." No grandfathering, nothing that's, that was across the whole city. So maybe, you know, some people said, "Not in my backyard, go ahead and do that kind of stuff somewhere else, south Austin, east, wherever, just, I don't, I don't want that here." But it had ci- city council approval to be a, a citywide initiative. And so there's, those are some of the big changes that could happen, and, and to your point, like, if the ci- if Eagle Pass does something like that, that would open up more, you know, somebody could apply for another meter, if they, they have a, another unit on the property. So again, these are all the different, we're trying to talk about different possibilities, and talk about what some other cities are doing, and I'm glad, you know, you're thinking about some of these things. So I'll just quickly show, there's different ways to do an ADU on one property. It could be in the backyard, like a guest house, or sometimes in the pa- many years ago, I used to call it maid's quarters, could be attached, could be connected. Some of the plans can even come like that from the beginning. Uh, some, some builders have house plans that are called multi- multi-generational, so basically has an en suite. And Mr. Casas, it's something that, that you've, you've, uh, looked into yourself, too.
Yes, it's because, l- like I mentioned to you, uh, last week, uh, when we discussed the issue, there is this n- new development that is going on in El Paso, where n- these developments that are being created, they call those lands like, uh, transgenerational, which it could be helpful for, let's say, your parents are older, you don't wanna have them, you know, uh, outside, or maybe far from, from where you live. And sometimes you can make something like this happen, where if it, it is allowed, then you put a ADU unit, right, into the backyard. They live there, they have their own privacy, uh, you have your own privacy, of course. Uh, and then we're all happy, because they're right there, you know, you can always go and see, hey, is everything fine, you know, whatever? And, no, but not only that, I mean, transgenerational not only means, uh, your parents, it could mean, you know, your sons that are, or your daughters that are starting in life, and maybe they want some privacy, but at the very end, they cannot afford, you know, a, a regular unit, this is a good idea.
Exactly, yep, those are some of the, some of the reasons why people like those ADUs. Couple other ways you could do it, you can, uh, retrofit and build something above a garage. Sometimes you can convert an existing garage into an ADU. There's different ways to do it, to fit something onto an existing property, to make an additional use in it, like Mr. Casas said, for different family reasons. Could even be to rent out, and you collect a little bit of income from your renter to be able to afford your mortgage payment. So many reasons why people, uh, ha- has, why this has become popular in many other cities. So we got to the end there of the visuals and, and things we wanted to show. Uh, we have this survey, there's a QR code there on the screen before you. This, um, has some good questions that we really like to hear from our community members, so we can get their feedback on what they feel is affordable, what some of the things they're looking for, and to, to make sure we are listening, uh, to their, their feedback before we hopefully take some good ideas to, to mayor and council, because ultimately, to change our ordinances, change our regulations, for the most part, we would need to do some ordinance amendments to make those things happen.
Would you recommend like, uh, citywide, like Austin debt?
I think it's aggressive, uh, a, a big part of that is, is a, a big part of this, in having experts here that sell homes and deal with clients, uh, that are looking for homes, uh, our planning and zoning commission, we really wanna hear, you know, I, I might have one opinion, but I really like us to have m- many opinions from different perspectives. So this is where, you know, we like to hear, what do you think? Do you think people would go for ADUs? Do you think they would, you know, potentially, yes, but not in my area where I've already been for the last thirty years? Let them do it in the new subdivision somewhere else? We, we, this is where we, we really like to, to hear, so, hear your thoughts. What they did in Austin, it was a blanket change to what they allowed in, what was single-family, now changed to three. So they, yeah, each plot did not have to do any special process, just go for a permit to build something.
I, I, I just think that it is orderly, you know, orderly done, uh, in a way where everything has to go through, again, to planning department, you know? So that we have some control.
Well, they have to get a permit.
Well, yeah, but, uh, I think, yeah, citywide might sound aggressive, but we are all facing, our parents are getting older, and we're all facing that we have sons and daughters that might start in life, and the way they think is different than the way we think. And, 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 and as long as it's orderly done in an organized way, uh, it could be a good idea for the near future. I mean, I'm all for it.
Thank you, good point. Just one other stat or, or data point that I recently heard, tying into what Mr. Casas just mentioned. Um, I forgot the exact number, but we are at the, the highest level of college grads unemployed. So this is another point that ties right to what you're saying. You know, maybe you have a twenty, early twenties child that just finished school, they're trying to find their job, they might need to come home, stay at, with their parents for a little bit while they're looking, until they can kind of get on their feet to buy their, get their own place. So, um, many stats all keep pointing to the same direction, which is, we need to make some changes. And the, the thing is gonna be, what, what changes do you think our community wants to see? Um, you know, I think we have some experts over here, what do you think people will buy? People will be interested in, in going out for? I personally think some of those, those narrow houses, very nice looking, um, I guess I'll go back to that. Another thing I think is, is greatly needed is not only we go smaller, we need to look at the building materials being used. Right now, everything is, you know, a custom home, and we got very pretty twenty-four feet, twenty-four inch by twenty-four inch expensive tile. We have these pretty marble backsplashes, very intricate ceiling, um, niches, and, and, uh, stepped, um, design, you know, all these things are just add cost, add cost, add cost. We need to find options, again, that people in our area who have the levels of income that we have in our area can afford. And so going, these kind of board and batten siding, uh, and maybe this little bit of a farmhouse style that got kind of really popular with the, um, what was her name, Joanna Gaines, and the, the Fixer Upper, I think was the name of that show. So, you know, it's, I think, a very cool style, again, that's just my opinion, it could be a very nice house. And there's many ways that we can reduce the cost compared to what is out there right now, what is being built right now. Um, so good points there, anybody else with, with other questions, thoughts, suggestions on how we can try to make some more affordable options? Parking is another big part of affordability. The more parking we require, the less units fit in a lot, the more the lot and the building have to cost, the rent has to cost, so.
I was gonna ask if, uh, ha- have we considered how a higher density is going to affect city services?
So that is one of the main, um, areas of study, to retrofit or go back into existing areas, is analyzing it. The water pressure will be sufficient, if the sewer lines will be able to handle, um, those are probably the biggest, bigger ones, um, impervious cover, you, as commissioners, you probably hear me that, but those online or in the audience here with us visiting today, uh, that basically means roofs and concrete and paved areas is what impervious cover is. So if we start adding more units, we have more impervious cover. So what that means is when it rains, that's more water that needs, that will run off and go to the street, go to the stormwater g- uh, system, which means potentially more flooding. So if we had, you know, a few houses, you know, it's, it's not a thing that I don't think overnight, we make the change, and every single house in that block is gonna implement a change, but we would have to work on maybe more detention ponds, regional ponds, uh, potentially more lift stations or different booster station from water and sewer aspects, to be able to make sure that all these new houses could still get the level of service they need. Because, great question, when an engineer divi- designed it, and they create those number of lots, they're basically designing it to that, they're not planning that you're gonna double it. So, great point, and that would be something that had, would have to be looked at very closely on a case-by-case basis, depending on which solutions we, you know, we, we consider. Very good question, any thoughts from the audience, from our experts?
Afternoon, Carlos Gortechia, local contractor. To the key word, uh, Mr. Casas was saying, citywide. I work throughout the city, in all areas, and I think we are behind, people have dwellings in their homes. So I think regulation and, and some changes to our code will allow us, or the city, obviously, allow the city to go inspect, obtain fees from permits, obtain revenue from permits from, from people who already have this, and, uh, and start regulating it. Citywide, I think we're way behind, I think in several areas, I'm not, I'm not gonna say a lot, but there are, on top of garages, in the backs of lots, in garages in themselves, uh, so I think this is something in- important, it's, it's already kind of done. Maybe we, we don't want to penalize the citizens that have already done it, maybe just help them get regularized, get up to date on their fees. That's a good source of revenue for the city, and, uh, and then allowing it, incentivizes jobs. Precisely being a local contractor right here, we're gonna need roofs, we're gonna need paving, we're gonna need all this. It would incentivize the local economy, I would believe, so that's my point there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a really good point, they, they are either ADUs or different units on homes already, whether they went in many years ago, before, you know, our rules about only one came into play, or, uh, some may just, you know, not be permitted. Some things do happen where, where the, the department never receives a permit and does not catch it. So there's different reasons where, very, very good point being made, is, is it exists already in some, some locations. Um, I know especially, you know, some of the older streets in the town, I could say, you know, like, for example, Ceylan, very big homes, those were, you know, very nice homes. And many of those, I think, had them as like maid's quarters, you know, from a hundred years ago, or, or, you know, in different times where, where things were a little different than they are today. But for, regardless of the reason, there are these kind of second units already on, on houses throughout the town. So, good point, I appreciate you, uh, sharing that, and so I, I think, maybe that's even one step, is maybe legitimizing or making those that already exist okay, and letting them, like Mr. Casas said, okay, come and get your permit, maybe before we said, no, we can't, um, we can't give you that, because technically you should only have one home there. Uh, maybe now, maybe that could be one small step, is things that are already there prior to any change we make, we will grant them that.
And I'm saying this because, I, I mean, I, I wanna mention to the public, and I wanna mention to the community, that in my case, you know, I requested a permit at the beginning of the, of the year, because I wanted to move my, you know, my mother-in-law and my sister-in-law live with me. Of course, I don't have my, my three children no more with me, so, yes, uh, uh, they were living with me, but at some point, there was a section on the house that was never used, and we requested, you know, a permit, so we did it in an orderly manner. And we requested, you know, uh, information, and that's when I found out that, as of right now, there's only like one account, electrical account that can be used, which we're gonna follow, of course, we're gonna comply, uh, with the ruling, but, uh, somehow, we can have this separation, we can have all these different matters being, uh, organized through the planning department, having, you know, to correct the permits and, and having, uh, to follow the new ordinances that might be, uh, that might be, uh, you know, looking for, uh, towards the, the council. I mean, you're, you're asking us for some feedback, and you're gonna be presenting this to the council, and I believe you heard more stories than actually what has been heard here, but at the very end, you know, it is a reality. I mean, we didn't have, uh, Airbnb probably twelve, fifteen years ago, now it is a reality. Now it's extra income that people receive and might help them, you know, uh, deal with their own personal lives. Uh, because somehow, you see, uh, people that only one person or two people live in the house, but there is like two, three, you know, bedrooms that are not being used, and, and that might represent some income for those people. So we gotta take that into consideration, because it is a reality, it is, it is here already, and, 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 and that's something that we need to work in the near future, not only for affordable housing, but also, you know, to help, uh, our family members, or anybody that, uh, could be benefited from, from, from this situation.
Great points, thank you. Anybody else, a lot of good points being shared, I really appreciate the, the feedback so far, Mr. Piarriela, you could just-
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
En la cuestión eléctrica, este yo recomendaría mantener el mismo este medidor que existe en una propiedad, ya que vamos a decir una casa de tres recámaras está usando la pareja, no, una recámara le sobran dos si quieres hacer tipo apartamentito para la segra o para un hijo, puedes poner otro medidor aparte, ya que va a ser la misma carga, pero sería esclavo del primer medidor, entonces estarías cobrando la carga del segundo medidor, pero tu entrada del servicio del poste sería la misma que ya está existiendo. Lo mismo pasaría con el medidor de agua, pues poner otro medidor privado y pues el consumo para la segunda, para la segunda vivienda.
Es algo que se puede hacer.
Se puede hacer. Otra cosa que también, hay más conflicto en estas pequeñas casas el estacionamiento, porque en estos días haz de cuenta, una familia nueva, una recámara, pero tienes dos estaciona, necesitas dos estacionamientos. Agentes de labor y patrol que vienen con su automóvil y tienen el de ellos privado, necesitan dos estacionamientos por una recámara. En otra segunda recámara necesitas al menos otro estacionamiento para la segunda o tercera recámara. Tendría que ver por la primera recámara dos estacionamientos, más uno adicional por cada recámara adicional.
Pues me imagino que el parte de lo que están hablando aquí es, es tomar en cuenta el estacionamiento.
Sí.
Este, porque hay ciertas reglas, que somos respetuosos de las reglas, pero que definitivamente al ser estos cambios, también tiene que ir los cambios del, del, del estacionamiento junto con...
Correcto.
Con las reglas. Este, no queremos que haya un amontonamiento, ni que hayamos que vaya a haber algún accidente donde no puedan salir en un incendio, pero sí queremos que haya un poquito más de flexibilidad. Y cuando digo poquito más, es que a veces, con una pequeña flexibilidad, se pueden hacer cosas, este, que te permiten tener a lo mejor a una pareja viviendo ahí, o a lo mejor, si tienen dos carros y nada más tú usas uno, pero tú tienes dos, pues a lo mejor hay que ser un poquito flexibles, eh, eh, en el estacionamiento. Digo, nada que pudiera poner en riesgo a ningún miembro de la comunidad.
Sí, y sobre todo las áreas de tareas escuelas, sobre todo alimentales. Este, mucho tráfico. Entonces tienes que contar también vehículos que van de paso. Estacionamientos en horas pico.
Gracias, Mario.
Okay, gracias.
Gracias. Would anybody else from the audience like to address the commission?
Hello, everyone. Buenas tardes. My, mi nombre es Yolanda Rivas, I'm a broker de Savvy Real Estate Services. Yes, we do attend, we do attend clients that have, that are interested in, they're first-time buyers, and a lot of the issues that we encounter is that the, the mortgage payment, the labor portion, and so we do have a lot of, I don't want to say first-time buyers that are looking to purchase a house. Thank you. So I was, I was saying that one of the issues that we encounter is affordability. So I think it would help a lot if we have a lot more developers, you know, have lots where they can build like fourplexes, and, because we do have a lot of people coming to us looking for a duplex, a triplex, fourplex, where they can live in one and invest, have the other ones as renters, you know, they can actually have money, income-producing properties, where they don't have to just have that, that, that burden, you know, making the mortgage every month, and having to see if they can afford, you know, for groceries, for monthly utilities, because as it is, with the interest rates that have gone up from last year to now, it's just hard for them to afford. So one of the things that I would suggest would be having or being able to develop like fourplexes, even on like lots that, I know right now we have, we can develop in, in multifamily lots, but maybe they would consider that, you know, and, and having that, I guess, making it accessible for them to build more than one, just like a fourplex, and have, will have more buyers, you know, that they won't have that burden where they have to come up with the whole mortgage on a, on a monthly basis. At least they have that income, and they can account to that. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's another really good idea. We will try to see what else we could do to encourage that. Right now, we do have a duplex zoning where they could do two units under one roof. We have R3A, where potentially what, what was just suggested, either triplex or quad, or quadplex could be built, but I will take that advice and look more closely and see what other cities might have, because maybe there's something that we could further reduce, or make something in between R3 and R3A, specific to that, that would be, I guess, very efficient for that. Because R3A is, you could build a lot of apartments, you can build a massive, so it may not be designed specifically or best suited for a triplex or quad. So that's a good point. We'll, we'll look to see how we can maybe make a specific zoning, if somebody wants to do that, that's going to be really efficient for that.
Mr. Madara, and I would have to mention what I meant in fourplexes, that there are loans for, like residential loans that they can do one to four units, and it's considered, it's not an investment, it's considered a primary residence. So they still get like, they can get programs with no down payment, lower interest rates, and or lower down payment, you know. There, it's, it's like if it's a residential property, they can live in one, and then let the other ones have income producing.
Very good point. So that's why we have our, our experts here on these topics. So I don't know if to call that a fun fact, but a very valuable one. So apparently there are programs where a person can get the special, I don't know, first-time homebuyer, or certain primary residence loans, zero percent down, different things that were just mentioned. And as long as they live in one, that loan still applies even if it's a fourplex. So that's a really good point, I think, to help people get off the ground, or, or start an investment, and start building wealth. I think that's a very important idea, that I've seen those in other cities where, where the whole street is just nothing but triplexes or fourplexes.
And you can actually repeat the formula like every year, or every two years. So probably in ten years, you have twenty units.
Rinse and repeat. So yeah, that's a really good one. We'll definitely look at that to see how we can make the most ideal solution for that. I think that's a very good idea, too. Okay, anybody else? I really appreciate everybody's stuck with us. Of course?
I also had a proposal on this whole affordability, increasing the supply. How? There's a bunch of houses, Mr. Madara mentioned downtown, Ceylon Street, Leona Street, Ford Street, way back there, that are abandoned, been abandoned for years. Basically, they're coming down. There's one 617 Leona Street, I've been trying to leave, I believe in stuff for the people to contact me and try to help them. But those are some things that we, we can also do, like the city could also do, in the short term, code enforcement, let's go out there, see all these people, notify them, do you even live here? Who are you? That 617 Leona Street, I searched the records from the county, it pertains to a company. It's not even local. It may not even be from Texas. So this is something that is on our reach, it's there, and again, incentivizes local economy. There's a lot of people like me going out there looking for work, and we can remodel, we can clean up. There's a lot of garbage as well on those lots that we can take care of. And, and it also beautifies the city as a side task, if you want to look at it that way, but increases the supply of homes in the area. And they're already there. They're already built. So.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that as well. There is a term infill development, that's, you know, streets that are already there, but for some reas, different reasons, there's a vacant home, or a dilapidated home, and nobody's in there. So those are prime, and a lot of cities really focus on that. Sometimes even provide different reduced permit fees, or just different incentives for people to go and remodel or rebuild in those type of lots. Because, like we talked about before, a big part of the cost and things is the street, the utilities, and all, all those permanent improvements that need to be put in for a neighborhood. And so that's already there, and you just have a gap, a wasted space. You're basically, you know, you're, you have this pavement, you have this not doing as much as it could. I don't know, maybe to put it, could probably try to think of a better way to put that. But again, infill or filling in, streets that have gaps, or have a house that's just, sometimes needs to be demolished. But there's, there, that's another thing that could be done. I think that's a good suggestion. With, we, the city could also consider programs that specifically incentivize people to fix up and get those back on the market, somebody living in those again. That, that's another good solution. So we talked about a lot. Anything from the banking side in terms of...
Question, I used to work in San Antonio, we wanted to perhaps have a community, I don't know if that's ever worked out here. They had a, I think it's only just long, they takes it up to the, the corner with, and there's a volunteer, the house was just, I don't know if that's ever, ever come out here, so this is, is that, Habitat for Humanity?
I haven't heard of them in the last five years that I've been actually involved in this, working for the city. I don't know if anybody who's been, you know, involved in development or building longer, maybe has heard about that. But I, I do like that point, too, is trying to attract nonprofits, that, that's kind of their mission, is to try to help in this area, too, and, and find cost-effective ways of building, getting volunteers to help with the labor. So that's another great idea we could try to see. Maybe we could recruit a group like that, Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity, or others similar, to see there's some interest in coming down to do some work. So that's a good point. From the lawyer's perspective, any suggestions or thoughts, Mr. Calderon?
Well, sure. Basically, I think that it takes a community collaborative effort to get affordable housing in the community. I think that downtown, we have a lot of empty historic buildings, like the city of Eagle Pass purchased the Crest Building, and it's just standing there. We did have a team from the University of Texas at Austin that presented a marketing plan of what to do with that building, and it did cost the city over a million dollars, and it's just standing, sitting there. One suggestion from the lawyer's perspective is that the city could convert that building into affordable housing for apartments, for low-rank apartments, either for senior citizens or for veterans. We, we need housing for our veterans who have served the military in the United States. Many of them are disabled from their service injuries. And that particular building is, has three or four stories. So, and it also has a basement as well. Everybody remembers the Toy Story in the basement of the, of the Crest Building. So you could make apartments on the upper floors, and on the first floor or the basement, you could have some retail shops to provide for the tenants that are living there. I know that there's a grocery store in downtown that would appreciate very much more business from downtown merchants. That would be one thing to do. And this gentleman actually took another idea from my, my mind, was that the Habitat for Humanity. It's going to take a collaborative effort where we, the city needs to be the catalyst in changing the law. This is what we hear today, that the city's code of ordinances regarding planning and zoning was excellent back twenty, thirty years ago. But for today's society, where a lot of the new construction is smaller, units are smaller sizes, needs to be changed. So that will require the city to do that, the city council to do that. But we have two high schools. They both have excellent carpentry programs, and we have a Southwest Texas college that also has a carpentry program. These students can be actually be brought together to build these smaller homes for the, the problem we have is, we have a very low median income, so a lot of families cannot afford it. But if we build these eight hundred, nine hundred square foot homes, maybe two, two bedrooms, one bath with a living room, and, and one driveway for one vehicle, in the community, that we can work together as a community. And we can teach these future carpenters, contractors, to utilize their skills while benefiting our community. We'll contact Habitat for Humanity. They do wonderful jobs. And I always am impressed, and I have a lot of respect for our brothers from the Jehovah Witnesses and Latter-day Saints, that they come together, and over the course of a weekend, they can build a church over the course of a building. They all pitch in, and from Friday to, to Monday morning, they build a complete, fully furnished, new church building in their communities. Why can't we do that here for our senior citizens? Why can't we do that for our veterans and our low-income residents? Yes, we can. It's a can-do attitude. We need to work in a total community effort. We just can't expect the city council to be the only ones. I've heard a lot of wonderful ideas this evening. I'm glad I was present for this, and appreciate everybody's contributions. But let's all put our heads together and work together. And there's a lot of volunteers that are willing to work. As Mr. Madara said, right now, we have the highest percentage of college graduates without a job. Let's put them to work. Let's put them to build affordable housing in Eagle Pass. And also, I had the pleasure of serving at one time on the Eagle Pass Housing Authority Commission. And we had a very dynamic young executive director, another dynamic person like Mr. Madara himself is, and a locally homegrown, educated. And what did we do? Unfortunately, our politics terminated that person. And that person took her professional skills down to Brownsville, Texas, and, and the time that she's been gone from Eagle Pass, she has developed tremendous amount of new low-income housing for the city of Brownsville. Because she had the political, public government that supported public housing and affordable housing in the city of Brownsville, which we don't have in Eagle Pass. We keep talking about it, you know, we do the talk, but we don't do the walk. We gotta take action. It's time for us to all put together. I hear all these great ideas, and I think Mr. Madara has done an outstanding job in his staff. They have traveled throughout the state of Texas to get all this research. We know what needs to be done in Eagle Pass. Now, we need to form a community committee that is going to put, implement, execute a plan of action to bring affordable housing to our community. Because we're going to continue to grow, and with all due respect to my fellow colleagues in real estate, finance, which is can, Eagle, Eagle Pass cannot afford this three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, three bedroom, two bathrooms. They need something more affordable. And Mr. Madara stated, our median income is fifty-one thousand dollars per household. That means two people working, a two-parent family. And you can't afford a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar mortgage on fifty-one thousand dollars a year. So, but we can build these homes for hopefully under a hundred thousand dollars through a community collaborative effort. So that is food for thought, for this community to take action. Let's all put in our two cents' worth, our different expertise that is available here in this room, and, and those who are not present, who could not be here... in this room, and those who are not present, who could not be here, and let's all get to work. Let's ruffle our sleeves and let's execute a plan for affordable housing for our community. It takes a community.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon, for those comments. So unless anybody else has...
Thank you, Mr. Calderon.
Anything else? We could start wrapping up. So we do have a QR code for a survey. Anybody who, hopefully if you're watching online through the city's Facebook livestream, we will have a link as well for this survey. So if you couldn't be here today to submit your comments, we're still gonna be taking comments for the next several weeks up until we present, we take to city council some ideas. Like I said in the beginning, we're not solving this overnight, we're not solving it in one meeting at city council, so there was a good point there, several good comments Mr. Calderon stated, one of them being a committee, if you're interested in continuing to be a part of the solutions here, our phone number and email to the department are up on the screen as well. Please let me know if you'd like to...
Put me down.
We've got one? Very good, thank you.
Put the hand up.
Two? Very good. So we will continue to work with a community, we, community effort, we've got four, this is a great, great start. I know you guys will help us recruit maybe a couple more, so this is what it's gonna take, is we have a couple of ideas we can hope to implement soon. It's gonna be an ongoing effort. We're gonna have maybe later in the year, next year, probably for many years to really address this, but we will hope to start with some solutions very soon, the next few weeks with city council. Mr. Casas, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Madara. Thank you for the community to participate, you know, the different opinions from the different professionals. I truly believe that this can be done. I don't have any thoughts about it. I think we are all for it, and we just, like I mentioned, we just need to do it in an organized, orderly way, and I truly believe this, this committee, you know, heard a lot of good things today.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairwoman.
If there's anything else...
If not, that concludes the presentation, and we'll be open to taking the next step for adjournment.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor unanimous. This concludes our meeting at 6:57 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.